All right, I'll go ahead and call this be the Squim City Council to order. If everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if the city clerk will please take roll call.
Councillor Kelly Berger.
Here.
Councillor Dan Butler.
Here.
Councillor Vicki Lo. Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson.
Present.
Mayor Brandon Janice. Councillor Harmony Rutter. And Councillor Nicole Hartman.
Here.
And Councillor Rutter is running this a little bit late, but she will be here. And if there is a motion to excuse Councillor Lo.
I move to excuse Councillor Lo.
Second.
Any opposed to that motion? And then that motion will pass and she is excused. All right, approval of the final agenda. There is one item on the final agenda that the clerk will go over just in case there's any confusion on it. So city clerk.
On tonight's consent agenda, item 8D, the DCD on-call contracts. There are four attachments for that. And the fourth attachment, when it was, it's formatted incorrectly. So it's a little bit jumbled up. So there's a hard copy for council to review. But if council would like to pull that off for further discussion, interim director Carla Bauton is happy to speak to that, but it's just a clean version for you to view. I will replace this with what's in the agenda packet tomorrow.
Thank you for that, for that added explanation. Having heard no comments, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
And I will second that.
Give Harmony just a moment here.
Good evening. Thank you.
All right, there was a motion to approve their final agenda. Any opposed to that? All right, see, and then the agenda is approved. All right, moving on to ceremony. We have two this evening. And the first one will be for Indigenous Peoples' Day. And whereas on September 13th, 2007, the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples was issued with the goal of encouraging countries to work alongside Indigenous people to solve global issues. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed during a United Nations conference in 1977. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day honors Native American people, their history and culture, and recognizes their resiliency as a people. And whereas contributions of Indigenous people throughout the history are integral to the story of this nation. And whereas the Squim City Council recognizes that we all reside on the land of Indigenous people who have lived here and provided stewardship of the land and its resources since time immemorial. And whereas the city of Squim is located on ancestral home of the Skollum people, the Strong People. This includes the LOR, L O L, Clown tribe, Janetown, Skollum tribe, and the Port Gamble, Skollum tribe, whose villages move throughout the territory according to seasonal hunting and gathering needs. Now therefore, I, Brandon Janice, Mayor of the city of Squim, do hereby proclaim and commemorate October 13th, 2025, as Indigenous Peoples' Day to honor all Indigenous people throughout the world, the United States, in Washington State, Clough County, and especially the city of Squim. Signed on this 13th day of October, 2025, Brandon Janice, Mayor. All right, the second one won't be for Sister City, Shiso City Recognition. And whereas the city of Squim, Washington, and the city of Yamazaki, Japan, entered into a sister city agreement on June 5th, 1993, affirming a mutual commitment to international friendship, cultural understanding, and community exchange. And whereas the city of Yamazaki birched with three other towns from the Shiso district on April 1st, 2005, and formed Shiso City. And whereas, following the new formation, the city of Squim and Shiso reaffirmed and strengthened their partnership throughout a renewed sister city agreement, continuing and expanding the bonds first established more than three decades ago. And whereas the citizens of the city of Squim and Shiso City have through the years demonstrated sincere goodwill and hospitality through student exchanges, cultural delegations, and shared celebrations that deepen mutual appreciation and global understanding. And whereas the friendship between the city of Squim and Shiso City reflects a shared vision of peace, cooperation, and respect that transcends national boundaries, enriches both communities throughout enduring personal and cultural connections. And whereas the city of Squim wishes to express its profound gratitude to the people and leadership of Shiso City for their steadfast commitment to this relationship and for their generous spirit in promoting international friendship. And whereas this sister city partnership continues to serve as a model of global collaboration and goodwill, inspiring future generations to value cultural exchange and shared learning. Now therefore, I, Brandon Janice, Mayor of the city of Squim and the Squim City Council hereby proclaim our appreciation for the friendship and partnership between the city of Squim and Shiso City and extend our heartfelt gratitude to the citizens, students, and leaders who continue to nurture this heartfelt, this meaningful bond, signed on this 13th day of October, Brandon Janice, Mayor. I need some pictures.
So I just wanted to say thank you so much for coming here. I know on council, we do a lot of important things, but to me, this is one of the most important. And I've been dreaming of this moment for four and a half years. So thank you for being here.
Anyone else from council like to make a statement?
Thank you so much. I couldn't agree more with the words of our proclamation. The opportunities that I've had throughout my life to study abroad and to go out in the world and make friends in the global community has been invaluable. So thank you very, very much. I hope that many of your students come here and that more of our students go there and that we have continued to have a beautiful relationship as a sister city. Thank you. It's an honor to meet you tonight.
I also, I wanted to say also, my sister got to go to Japan and I was looking forward to that. And then COVID took that opportunity away. And so in my senior year, it's so good to be able to meet you and kind of get that experience anyway. So.
Move on to item six, public comment. I think this is a limited public forum and individuals providing public comment must not disrupt or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. And this is not a forum for hate speech. The city of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support hate speech. Free speakers are expected to be courteous and refrain from making hateful comments, sounds, or remarks. And any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. And the city of Squim stands firm in its commitment to being an inclusive community and rejects discrimination of any kind. Do we have anybody signed up?
No one has signed up for remote public comment. Let me grab the sign-in sheet. We have one person signed up for public comment, and that's Timothy Dalton.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Timothy Dalton. I am Housing Grant Resource Director for Clough County. And I kind of wanted to talk real briefly about Consent Agenda 8F tonight. Recently, Serenity House brought forward an application to the Housing Solution Committee for this Sun Belt project. It's a 36-unit, low-income, chronic homeless with disability project on Fifth and Hemlock is basically the corner of where it sits, going from 16 units to 36. Sharon wanted to be here tonight, but she's busy working on a couple of grant applications for this project. But you know what? We've worked, we've met with staff a couple of times working through this project. It's going to be in the neighborhood of about $12.5 million, 36 units of really affordable housing that's needed in this area. The commissioners will be looking at resolution tomorrow morning, which will allocate $1 million of 1590 funding for this project, contingent on full funding. But she has two years until February 1st of 2027 to be funded. But like I say, she's diligently working on getting this project funding and really looking forward to getting a shovel in the ground in Squim and building affordable housing down here. So I just kind of wanted to bring that forward and express the admiration that we have for working with city staff on this program, that they've been more than willing. I mean, they're working with us and trying to get through the hurdles. And they're with any project, there will be, but this is going to be a nice project. I think the neighborhood will like it as we move forward. But I wanted to say thank you for your letter of support. And I know Sharon is very gracious with that also. Thank you.
Tim, would you, sorry, it went by very quickly. Location of this for the record?
Is on the Fifth and Hemlock.
Thank you.
Down. It is where their Sun Belt apartments are currently. There's a 16-unit development there that was initially built in 1947 as assisted living facility. And through the course of there, that they've had some money put into it. But the project has just gotten to a point that O and M costs and everything, that it's just getting more and more expensive to operate to where if they could go in and build new, that they would double their capability of what they can house there. And so, okay.
You're welcome.
And that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you. See, consent agenda, city clerk.
Items on tonight's consent agenda. Claim vouchers totaling $1,398,672.98. City council meeting minutes from September 22, 2025, and September 29, 2025. ATS Automation Allerton Soul Source Contract Resolution. DCD On-Call Consultant Contracts. Wilson Engineering Silverhorn Deepwell Design Contract Amendment. And Serenity House Letter of Support.
I'd move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. Anything further? Any opposed? All right, see, and then that motion will pass. All right, moving on, general business. 9A, Sue, 2025 Year-In Budget Amendments.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Sue Higginor, your Finance Director. For the record, tonight is the first formal touch on the amendments to the 2025 budget. And as you may or may not know, amendments are somewhat standard operating procedure. It doesn't mean that we do amendments to the budget every year, but we do them often enough that it's kind of regular procedure, if you will. And this is because if you think about it, the budget that we are working under right now, the 2025 budget, was starting to be prepared by staff over a year and a half ago, right? And so a lot can happen in that time. Fortunately, we have a mechanism like an amendment to help us continue operating the way that we need to. So we've got your very specific line item budgets in a detailed document. And I just thought that I would address a few of these items that we're presenting for your approval and hopefully a public hearing at the next meeting. So let's talk about the general fund. We tend to be very conservative when we budget our resources. So the resources that pay for things. As it turned out, we have a much bigger beginning fund balance in our general fund than we expected. And we have some unexpected permitting revenue. We'd like to use those resources for some one-time and unexpected expenditures. As I mentioned in the Q2 2025 financial reports, the general fund balance currently exceeds policy maximum. So it's a great time to utilize those resources for some important projects that we've got. You'll also remember at the Q2 financial report that our street operations fund is, the fund balance is below policy minimum. And we need to get that back up within policy. So we'd like to transfer some additional general fund monies there. We want to increase transfers out to our capital facilities. It's the 306 fund for our Spruce Street parking lot. This was a project that was originally budgeted in 2024. And we'd like to roll forward some unused budget on that as well. And we'd like to roll forward some unused budget on that as well. We'd like to increase transfers out to our equipment reserve for some anticipated equipment and IT projects. We'd like to increase our growth planning professional services sought to perform additional aspects of the comprehensive plan and related code updates, which were mostly paid for by our increased permitting revenue, which again, I think I've mentioned before, is very difficult to predict. And we tend to be very conservative with those numbers. We'd like to increase our Washington City's Insurance Authority insurance assessment that was unexpected. We'd like to increase appropriations for unanticipated software subscriptions that support our operational goals of digital transformation, which we continue to do. We'd like to increase some IT salaries and wages. We've had some promotions, which is great news. We've hired at the director level when we had previously budgeted for manager level and some associated expenses with that. We'd like to increase police overtime. And Lord knows they have been working a lot, even though they're fully staffed for the most part. They have a lot of new officers on board, which means they can't always get out and cover shifts the way that our normal officers or our regular officers do. So it requires that our regular officers not just cover their own shifts, but they cover the shifts of our younger, less experienced officers that take a while to get out on the, on the street, if you will. I've talked about the equipment reserve. We want to do some additional IT projects and purchase additional equipment. We also anticipate that some items purchased in the prior years and in the prior year budgets are going to come in this year and we're going to have to pay for them this year. So we're going to roll forward some unused budget for those items. Talked a little bit about capital facilities and the Spruce Parking Lot. Also in your write ups for the cover sheet, this was, this write up happened before we had kind of a pivot on our Civic Center second floor remodel project. If you were, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read their emails today, but our city manager, Mr. Huish, sent one out that said we'd really like to take a pause on the second floor remodel because we'd like to really address the current working conditions of those staff that work outside of the Civic Center. So namely, our Public Works staff. So we're pivoting right, right here. We're still going to ask for some appropriations for that, but it's going to be a different project. Like I said, we're putting that on pause. And I've mentioned, we also have some increases that we'd like to do in our water operations fund. Again, that WCIA annual insurance assessment. I think I've been talking about the increases in our insurance costs for years now. And this is just another result. Each fund pays their proportionate share of that assessment based upon their claims history. And those tend to shift every year. Finally, we'd like to create a new fund. It's going to replace an old fund. It just really needs a new number. It's our Employee Flexible Spending Fund. When the state auditors came in for our 2023 audit, they said, oh, this is a custodial fund. It's not a different type of fund. So we have to renumber it and then we have to give it appropriations so that it complies with the bars manuals. So those are kind of the big ones. Staff are recommending that council waive the second touch rule and schedule a public hearing for the next council meeting. And I do want to remind you, because I was looking at where we were missing a couple of council members here, to pass the amendments, we need a majority plus one vote. It's required. So that's a total of five to pass the budget amendment. Just keeping that in mind. Okay, so that's all I had for my comments. I'm ready to take any questions if you have them.
Any questions?
On the WCIA insurance assessment, is that fluctuate based on the entire pool or just based on our fund portion of it?
It fluctuates on the pool. I might, I might wink, wink, nod, nod to our chief risk manager here at the city.
Purposes of the record, Christina Nelson, Grove City Attorney. The answer is both, right? There's a certain amount of, and it's probably very similar for what the PewDie has as well. There is a certain amount of that that just comes from the overall claims that are paid out for the pool as a whole and how that is divvied up. And then the individual score or assessments are based on a rolling five year average. And so, but part of it is that separately, WCIA had discussions with the Washington State Auditor that said that WCIA was not meeting these two actuarial standards when in fact they were, but they, as Sue can attest, they tend to change how they figure them. And so the state auditor required a certain dollar threshold, which resulted in some fairly significant assessment increases that I had to talk Sue off the ledge. But, but you know, so that's a very long way of saying, yes, it's both. But the recent assessment activity that we've seen from WCIA in the past few years should not be the norm going forward because that was one of the things that the executive committee discussed was the need to have a sustainable pace rather than the sticker shock that we all experienced a few years ago.
Thank you so much, Christina. Any other questions? I knew you could explain it better than me.
Sue, thank you for continuing to use your gift to put pros onto numbers and make it understandable.
No, you are so welcome.
I did happen to see the email from city manager this afternoon about the pivot on the second floor. And imagine that's, it's tough to prioritize that sort of thing. And I appreciate the work that you put into that and the attention being paid to the staff out particularly at Public Works. But the question I would have before voting to, to go straight to public comment is what's the impact? I know you don't know yet. Do you expect it in 306, the second bullet point, to be the same numbers, just using them differently? Or do you expect there to be significantly different numbers in terms of needing to?
I don't expect that there's going to be significantly different numbers.
Okay.
I don't even think that we will need all of the appropriations for what we have planned. And we also have to remember it's the end of October. So how much work can we get done in the next two months, right? So.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is just a temporary fix, trying to get them in a portable of some sort of trailer, dry, clean, warm. You know, as you know, there are two of the Public Works crews are working in sheds that were not intended for, I mean, for equipment or storage, but not for humans. So we're just trying to get them at least through the winter in something that's, so it's not the big public shop redo that will be, this is just a temporary fix. So we're not trying to go big, just get them warm and safe and whatnot.
And you'll have that.
We're just assessing that right now. So we just, we had Labor and Industries come in and do ergonomic training session to let everybody know about their seat heights and their monitor heights and their angles of, you know, everything. And these, these folks are literally sitting on, you know, gas tanks and logs and cardboard boxes and whatnot. I've, I've heard from several of them that they, anyway, I shouldn't go into it, but they, they find better, better chairs and other, you know, dumpsters around town than we've been able to provide them. So we're, it's just time to get them up to a basic level. We'll go nice and bigger when we bring something. But Public Works is working really hard now, I think, in an accelerated way to try to evaluate and put some plans together. But, and we'll bring those to you and get your input on that for the, for the major shop. But this is just a temporary solution for chairs. They've already got monitors. It's just going to be portables.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Anyone else? If not, there is a motion.
Moved away with the second touch on this matter. Direct staff to schedule a public hearing for the next meeting.
Second. Movement seconded. Anything further? Any opposed? I see, and then that motion will pass. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you so much.
All right, item 10, this is Information only comp heads a plan update. Carla.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's my pleasure to be before you again on your monthly update on the comprehensive plan and the great work that your planning commission is taking care of for the comprehensive plan. So in your packet is the status update memo that you've been getting now every month. So I will not go through it in detail, but happy to answer any questions that you might have as you have reviewed it. There are a couple of things that I like to highlight, starting on page two of the memo, which it shows the progress that we're making on each element. I did want to note that at last week's planning commission meeting, we had a really great, great work study session with the planning commission, walking through the future land use map in each of the land use designations. Nicole, I always appreciate your attendance. So thank you for walking alongside the planning commission as we're going through the comprehensive plan. Was a really pivotal moment where we are really coming down to the close to the last few elements. So at next week's planning commission meeting, we'll be bringing forward the land use chapter. And then the, we do have the joint meeting between yourself and the planning commission. Thank you for working with your city clerk on dates. It was a little bit more challenging than I thought it was going to be, primarily because of the consultant availability. But we do have a date of November 17th. And if you can make it, I think you will be very pleased with the product. We will be finalizing that. Leland Consulting will be finalizing that. Had a meeting with them earlier today. We'll get that publicly posted on our website and announced. And it is a very excellent market analysis for housing and for jobs in the, in the city of Squim. And then we'll close out the year with our housing chapter, which as you probably will recall from earlier this year when we talked at your retreat about the Growth Management Act and the changes that the state legislature has made. This is a really important chapter because a lot of the amendments the state legislature made had to do with housing and that requirements, our new requirements for the housing chapter and the economic development chapter. And then with that, we will have walked through all of the policy chapters of the comprehensive plan. And then we'll turn our attention to the capital facility plan. And still continuing, we are still on track for a first quarter release of the comprehensive plan publicly to, to start the public process with you and then the public hearing process with the planning commission and ultimately you at the end. So I, that is where we're at. We're in a great spot and we keep working, you know, we're, we're keep plugging away. I did just want to make one more comment and then happy to answer any questions. Attached with your packet was a handout that I presented at a recent panel put together by the Economic Development Council of Clougham County, which is where is the future of housing. And the city manager thought you might enjoy seeing this packet with a lot of data in it. This is a preview of what you will see from the Leland Consulting market analysis, a lot of, not all of the graphs, but most of the graphs for the second half of the handout came from the consultant, from the consultant as part of that market study. The first two pages are data that what came generated from the DCD department as far as permitting goes. So with that, I'll close and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say I think that that last meeting was very positive because it showed the ability to adapt to these different changes in zoning requests that all seem to make sense. So I just appreciate all that hard work. It makes it very positive for our residents.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Thank you. The presentation you attached is fantastic. That's probably the best presentation of our housing status that I've seen. So thank you for putting that together. You said you presented that at EDC?
Yeah, so the EDC had a special event on September 30th. And all the cities in Clougham County, planning directors were on a panel as well as local real estate professionals. And Timothy Dalton was on the panel and as well as a housing developer. And so we, we all had a little pie, you know, piece of the pie on discussing housing in Clougham County. So that, that handout was one, a lot of what I spoke from.
Yeah. Is there an appropriate place on our website that you could post this so that it's available, easily available to public?
Yeah, that's a great idea. We'll, we'll make, we'll make that happen tomorrow.
I think it'll be very helpful.
Yep. Great. Great, thank you.
All right, move on to reports, youth liaisons.
Hello, all right. For purposes of the record, this is Lincoln Forest Student Liaison speaking. Good evening, city council members and audience. Recently at Squim High School, we had Duke come to the high school during our lunch on the 6th of this month to advertise their college and athletics. Two weeks ago, we had our homecoming game dance in our homecoming hallways. Our homecoming hallways came first. It's where the leadership students come together to decorate our hallways in our homecoming theme, which this year happened to be music and different genres of music. We had several spirit competitions and right now the seniors are in the lead thankfully of the spirit competition. We unfortunately lost our homecoming game. I'm going to blame everything but our team for losing that game and choose to live my life that way. And lastly, we had our dance, which was a historic night for Squim High School. It was the most attended homecoming dance. We sold between, what was it, 500, 576, which is over half of our number of students. So I would call that a great success. Not quite. That's more around 600 anyways. And you could definitely tell there was a lot of people in there when you were in there because you were like, why can't I move anywhere? It is crowded. Lastly, for me, we have a fast food night coming up this Tuesday, so tomorrow, with Southern Nibble in attendance as well to help, yeah, to help cater and give free food to the attendees for parents wanting to learn about fast food for their kids. And I'm going to hand it over to Leila now.
For purposes of the record, this is Leila Sandin, Youth Liaison. School Education Foundation had their gala on Saturday, very well attended. They had the Squim High School, Middle School Jazz Band play just music, jazz music during the dinner. And the leadership students served the food, which is catered by the goat and radish. So that was, and it was very successful too. Lots of grants were funded. I think it was 50,000 ish around that. So yeah, good news for the school district. Rally in the Alley is this Saturday. That's an interact event where people bring furniture, trash, anything that they would normally take to the dump in PA. But they have people to help them and it's much closer. It's at Carey Blake. So if you have any furniture or anything like that, feel free to bring it. It's nine to noon this Saturday. Also, there's a college fair this Tuesday at the high school after lunch to three. So like 12 to three. Pretty much every college in Washington State sends a representative. It's pretty full. But yeah, very exciting. So that's it. Any questions?
Good evening, council, and always nice to meet with you and also our distinguished CISO delegation. So thank you for joining us tonight, making the long trip. I will refer, council, to several of the emails I've sent that you might want to just check out. We've moved our annual employee appreciation event to November, the week before Thanksgiving. And of course, you're invited to attend that. It'll be during the lunch hour. But really putting a lot of emphasis on the amazing work and accomplishments of our employees. and accomplishments of our employees and really focusing in on that should be good. We've talked about the public work crew workspaces, and so I won't bring that up. But you're also, I think you got received a meeting invite for our Halloween potluck. And again, that everything that we do as staff, you're always invited to. And so I want to make sure that you feel welcome there. Carla was a little, um, a little humble in, as she explained, the panel that she sat on was called the Future of Housing. You saw the data that she presented and it was way above anything else that was expected out here and has been used before. Like you said, Dan, that we've really, we've been looking for that kind of data. I know several of you have been on the planning committee or commission and never had access to that data. And it, and it just keeps coming. So, uh, you know, kudos to her for working, finding and working with Leyland Consulting to get us that kind of material. All that goes into as well as a comprehensive economic development strategic plan will go into the comp plan. So this is all, it's really exciting where we're heading. And, and the planning commission that you already heard about too. Everybody there was just very excited about and really didn't have any comments other than complimentary with the way that Travis and Carla, the information that they presented there. So, you know, things are going really well. Uh, I'll just move quickly through a couple of other things I wanted you to, um, uh, know about, I guess. We're still working on three positions that are pretty key to the city. This, uh, in, in IT, we have a GIS administrator that we really need. There'll be a business analytical administrator as well. We, Carla's looking for a senior planner, of course, to replace a position and then a police officer. So those are big things. Uh, also in HR, we're working on wrapping up action plans from all of the departments. We, we do the employee survey. You were supposed to go first. Where are you? Oh, oops. So I, she said, so Emily was, is presenting Gallup tonight. And I said, no, you go first. I'll, I'll, I'll follow you. So I really do need to cut this short then. So, uh, you're going to see the results of our Gallup, um, survey that we completed a couple of months ago. And Emily's going to walk you through that. But the key to do that is to listen to our employees and then put action plans around the things that they're suggesting that we could improve on. And so really grateful for HR and their role in extracting good ideas from employees to make it a better workplace. I'm so sorry, Emily. Oh, boy. The other thing I, I would give HR credit for is they're, they're kind of the sponsor of our wellness committee. The wellness committee sent a survey out to our employees and asked what wellness initiatives they thought were most meaningful. And for the, they heard back that they, that they, they wanted to have a community service project. So this past weekend, I think 11 or 12 staff members, it kind of snuck upon many of us that had other commitments. But they went out and partnered with the North Olympic Salmon Coalition and planted over a hundred trees along the Dungeness River. That of course will be help future eroding and preserve the, the river beds and whatnot. So really kudos to HR for initiating and leading that effort. I think I'll kind of end it there. We, a couple of other just really, I think, important things. We, we did have the chief of the fire department from PA come, came over and talked to our ECC staff about the, um, um, tank spill that occurred over there. And so it was like a tabletop, but it was a real, a real one. And so we, we learned a lot from their experience in the last month or so. There's other things that I could talk to you about, but you probably have them in front of you. So feel welcome to talk to me if you have any questions. So Emily, I'll turn the time over to you to share that. Again, I apologize.
No problem. Thanks, Matt. Good evening, council. Emily Stednik, Human Resources Director. Heather's got some slides to pop up here real quick. Annually, I love to share with council the good work that our staff are doing through the Gallup Engagement Survey. The survey, as you know, is administered internationally. I don't know if it's yet made it to Japan, but we can check in later with our, our delegates. This is something that the city has done. This is our fifth iteration of the survey and something that we really value at every level. I'm just going to keep talking until those slides get, just kidding. I'll just talk.
So how about those Mariners, huh?
Thank you. There it is. Great. Thank you, thank you. Okay, here we go. So, um, I like to say that my favorite metric on the Gallup Engagement Survey is not the actual scores or survey responses, but it's how many people took the survey. And this year, again, we had a great participation at 86% of our staff overall completed the survey, which to me means that staff know that regardless if they put positive feedback or critical feedback, that it will be listened to and they will be heard. So you can see our overall engagement mean is 4.16. That number is on a scale of one to five. And our percentile rank among local governments is 82%. And that went up from 70th percentile last year. And that's city counties and state agencies across the country. So those are all great things. We had a slight increase from our last mean of point oh seven. Next. Our overall engagement value, our number of engaged employees went from 52 to 59. So these are the employees that have ownership, that have drive, that are committed to making the city of Squim a better place to be. This is a great metric overall. I think national average is like 32, 36, somewhere in the mid 30s. And it's, it's a number that nationwide has really struggled post COVID. But for us, it's, we've seen some nice increases in that engaged metric, which is great. Gallup builds their questions of engagement over these four categories. And, and they do it in a hierarchy of, of need, basically. So basic needs, individual contributions, team contributions, and then that growth kind of self actualization, self develop, or career development at the top of the hierarchy. And that's how they build their questions. Here's overall our questions. That's perfect. And you can see the color, that is our percentile ranking. And then the number on that current mean is our score, our average. And again, this is all staff. You can see the little triangle next to Q7. Q7 was in the last seven days, I've received recognition or praise for doing good work. That metric went up what's called statistically significant amount. So point two is statistically significant. And that one was one of the ones that we focused on last year. So it's great to see the needle move that directly there. The other ones are all pretty stagnant or a little up, a little down. But that's, that's the one that shows great growth this year. I think this is also the first year we've had straight greens, light green or dark green. So that's also fun to see as a visual. Then the city asked the, the series of additional questions as well. These are things that we care about and want to hear from employees on. These have changed a little bit throughout the years, but for the most part been consistent to see that trending. So you can see also, um, because we don't have the, the percentile rank, the industry rank, because these were specific to us here in Squim, which is why we care more about that trending. You can see a slight decrease on, I have confidence in the leadership that we're going to nation to successfully manage emerging challenges. So all of these questions, really the number as itself is just a number, right? It doesn't mean anything to us. What, what has meaning is in the conversations after the survey happens. So in understanding why employees felt like they did or why they rated what they did, and then creating action plans to build around individual metrics by department. We have staff that do super diverse roles. So having somebody who scores a four in one department, a four in another department might mean something totally different, right? So it's all about the after survey conversation. This, the survey just acts as a tool to start the conversation. Next. There are also some space for written comments in the survey. And so these are some trends that we saw as some summaries of comments that we saw over and over. So great staff and supervisors who share common values and have strong community focus. Our commitment to mission, commitment to purpose was really strong this year in the survey, which is always great to see. Strong cooperation and communication among departments. Uh, and then some areas of improvement, some desire for clearer expectations in job roles. Emphasis on importance of communication with immediate supervisors. So definitely some good material here for conversations.
Emily, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
When you're talking about those post survey conversations, do they? I imagine it depends, but I still wanted to ask, is it one-on-one? Is it team oriented? Is it, does it depend?
Great question. Well, Gallup really prioritizes the confidentiality of the survey. So we don't want anyone to feel singled out like, oh, I better score well or I'm going to get called out by my manager, right? So, so we really try to emphasize the team and different departments. It does depend on how the department's structured. HR is a very small department. There are two of us, right? So to be able to, um, to have those conversations in a way that's meaningful is important. Public Works is a larger department and somebody who works, you know, an engineer has a very different role than a wastewater operator, right? So how to have meaningful conversations in a way that staff feel safe and that they can share and that we can actually put together an action plan for their role. So, or for their team. So this is our, our timeline here. The survey was taken in July. In August, HR met with all the directors to go over department results. August and September, directors then meet with staff to discuss those results and start working on an action plan. So we are, um, right now in the action plan period. Most, almost all departments have completed their action plans and have steps in place to, to address whichever question the staff wanted to. We'll do a mid-year update in April and then re-survey next July. So that's Gallup. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Besides surveying, I, I kind of do what's called rounding in the healthcare world. I kind of go around and meet with all the different teams in public works. But you know, we have different divisions just in the crews, right? Parks and water and sewer and streets. And you know, there's every one of those teams or divisions has five to six people or whatever. And so, uh, I, I will tell you that they appreciate the fact that we're, we continue to survey. There's a slight cost of this, but it's certainly worth it because they know that we're continuing to ask them how we are doing and what we can do better. And then putting actions behind that to move the needle for them. So I, I do hear from, on a personal level, because when I do ride alongs or when I meet with them, they, they appreciate that. So I think it's the right thing to do.
Well, thanks again, Matt. As usual, good, good report and appreciate the time you and your staff put into putting this together for us. I just wanted to comment and affirm your, uh, on your report, the section three. And then D, given the, the amount of attention we've paid to the Seabrook and West Bay development and the public interest in that, the, to see the initiative that city's taken to establish a dialogue with, with Seabrook and move that along in the midst of this time of moratorium. I really appreciate that. That's good news for us, for me anyway, to pass along to people that talk to me that are quite concerned. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Is there any news on the Seal Street Park situation? As far as the park.
Yeah, I think that was fell under legal or was it public works? I think they're still.
We're still gathering some information on that. Legal has, um, some limited information, but, um, part of the issue is that Public Works needs to kind of establish the area that we're talking about here because, uh, the documents that legal has found are not particularly helpful for that identifying a specific area. So, um, please feel free to talk to Paul next time you see him.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, committee reports. Anybody have anything? All right. Open council discussion. Guess I'll start off by saying, I just want to thank, uh, Mr. Tomita and Mr. Char. Again, thank you for visiting our city this evening and I hope that your stay here is enjoyable. And I'd like to say, I think Jim's stepped out, but Jenny and Annette from the Sister Cities, thank you again for all the work that you've put in and Rachel as well. And, uh, again, there's Jim. Yeah. Thank you, everyone. And again, thank you for visiting us and I appreciate it. Yeah, I think, have anything else for open discussion? All right. Anybody like to attend the October 21st planning meeting? Okay. All right. Next one will be on Monday, the 27th. There'll be a work session at 5:00 PM on municipal funding criteria. And there'll be a six o'clock regular meeting. And with that, we all know what time it is.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
See you then. Have a good night, everybody.